The committee is back from recess. Next up, colleagues, I would like to welcome our final panel to join us. It's our community stakeholders, the people whom the Insular Cases directly affect. I have here this morning former Senator Dr. Kelly G. Marsh Titino. Dr. Kelly Marsh Titino has studied and taught about Guam and the region for numerous years, and as a senator had oversight of the Commission on Decolonization. Dr. Marsh Titino is an advocate for justice, and we are grateful for your participation here today. Thank you for staying on the long run, Senator Manana Sizou. And you may present your testimony now. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hafide Honorable Vice Speaker Munya Barnes and other senators present. I write in support of building upon and strengthening Resolution 56-36. House Resolution 279 of the 117th U.S. Congress and Resolution 56 of the 36th Guam Legislature are sponsored by independents, progressives, Democrats, and Republicans. This is as it should be, unfettered by party lines. As the resolutions address human rights issues that greatly affect us all, Martin Luther King Jr. reminded us of this when he astutely observed: "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere," and this is so within the United States. The continuance of colonies within the U.S. is an injustice not to those of us living in the territories, but their existence tarnishes the Federal Republic of the United States at its core. It is important to recognize that racial views and stereotypes from the era of Plessy versus Ferguson have long been rejected and must continue to be rejected and removed from our governmental systems. However, we must take this a step further and get to the root of the problem within the U.S., which is the existence of inhabited territories, AKA colonies, that deny indigenous and human rights and by their very nature create inequities. Resolutions 279 and 56-36 must call to remove the existence of inhabited territories from within the United States governmental system permanently through the process of self-determination. Otherwise, the resolutions respectfully stated are akin to putting lipstick on a pig or a Band-Aid on a bullet wound, as the sayings go. Since Plessy versus Ferguson and the Spanish-American War and the Insular Cases themselves, the United States and indeed the world community have continued to grow in their understanding and recognition and support of inherent human rights and indigenous rights, as well as in understanding the dehumanizing and oppressive nature of colonialism. The world came together after World War II to end colonialism. The United States of its own volition placed Guam on the United Nations List of Nonself-Governing Territories in 1946 in recognition of the need to provide a path to full governance and end colonialism by another name. Because of the continued allowance of inhabited territories within the U.S., 75 years after over 80 countries have self-determined, U.S.-inhabited territories currently comprise nearly 20% of the world's remaining recognized colonies. Owing to the U.S. and a handful of others, we are now well past the third international decade for the eradication of colonialism. We must do more than simply reject the flawed bifurcation of a territorial system that was itself flawed to begin with. Let us not fool ourselves into believing that the system of incorporating territories was ever not riddled with oppressing others' rights, namely the rights of First Nations peoples or anyone else that was in the way for the nation's gain. The Insular Cases were opportunities to correct the territorial system, which they did not do. Today, over 100 years later, we must call for finally ridding ourselves of the outdated, oppressive system that is inhabited territories within the U.S. We must call upon the United States to live up to its obligations agreed to 75 years ago and for which it has faulted other nations, and that is to dedicate real effort, real energy, and real commitment to supporting educational and other efforts that bring to fruition the long-promised but never fulfilled self-determination for its colonies. If I might add to Justice Harlan's dissent to the Insular Cases, that the idea that this country may acquire territories anywhere upon the earth by conquest or treaty and hold them as mere colonies or provinces, the people inhabiting them to enjoy only such rights as Congress chooses to accord them, is wholly inconsistent with the spirit and the genius of the Constitution. I say that it is also inconsistent to the spirit and the genius of the recognition of indigenous and human rights upon which decolonization is founded. Resolution 56-36 rightly reminds the United States of the injustice that is the yoke of colonization, which the 13 colonies themselves once bore. It correctly calls out the racist policies that drove the policy of manifest destiny. Resolution 56-36 is further significant in that it also reminds the United States that the United Nations had made clear through a joint allegation letter to the U.S. government that there are still ongoing human rights violations suffered by the indigenous Chamorro people of Guam at the hands of the federal government that are so largely owing to the status of being uninhabited territory within the U.S., which in many ways allows for such inequitable treatment and abuse. The Chamorro people's history and the history of the larger community of Guam are replete with abuses, the listing of which within Resolution 56-36 are a few of the many. In closing, it is not enough to reject the racist views and stereotypes that inform the decisions of the Insular Cases. We must recognize that the territorial system within the U.S. was flawed from the beginning. We must remove the existence of inhabited territories from within the U.S. governmental system and reject any part of the Constitution or any legislation that allows for them to exist. The U.S. must stop its 120 years of Band-Aid fixes and finally get to the root of the problem to reach long-term resolutions of injustices that affect over 3.5 million people by living up to its obligation, which it agreed to of its own volition, to do its part in ending the existence of colonialism by preparing and supporting self-determination for 20% of the world's colonies that are under its control. We must call on the U.S. government and the nation to modernize, to rid itself of a status that the entire world, including the U.S., has agreed is oppressive, colonial, and unacceptable. As a historian, I am intimately familiar with the daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly painful effort through appeals, resolution, and testimony it has taken us to gain any civil rights within the U.S.'s territorial system. The fact that I and others are here testifying after 122 years as a territory on resolutions that may or may not pass, which may or may not make small improvements on our territorial status, is a testament as to why we need to move forward and modernize rather than nipping and tucking an outdated, antiquated system that was never anything but flawed. Sizou Smasi for allowing me to present this testimony.
Undankalu, ndankalunasizou smasi, Senator Marsh Titino for truly taking the time to come out this morning to testify on this Resolution 56-36 COR. And I just want to extend to my colleagues and the listening audience, I promise you, we only have a couple of more individuals scheduled to testify. I also want to acknowledge that we did receive testimony from former Assistant Secretary Anthony Babalta and Micronesia Climate Change Alliance President Monica De Oro, both who were here earlier, but both unfortunately had to leave. So at this time, I will recognize representing the Fanogi Coalition, we have Dr. Michael Lohan Bavakwa. Dr. Bavakwa is a longtime community activist around issues related to revitalizing the Chamorro language and culture and Guam's decolonization. He is currently the co-chair for the organization Independent Guam and a member of the Fanogi Coalition. Undankalunasizou smasi, Dr. Bavakwa, please proceed.
Hafide Sizou Smasi, Nuhamsu Totos, Senator Sizou, Senator Sizou, and Speaker Terlahe Loque. Much has been said, and so, and in fact, many of the things that I would say would have already been said, sometimes in much more eloquent ways. And so I have a short statement from the Fanogi Coalition, and then I'll just share some brief thoughts from myself. And the Fanogi Coalition and many other community organizations have been working diligently to engage our island community in educational discussions about our political status and to envision a just and sustainable future for Guam's people. Recent national attention to Puerto Rico's political status and a reexamination of the Insular Cases offers a chance for there to be a real productive conversation about the future of the U.S. territories in terms of their political status. One problem that regularly plagues these conversations is the idea that in terms of resolving the territorial status of the territories, a one-size-fits-all approach can be used. In the context of the Insular Cases, this may be to resolve this more than a century-old problem by finding more ways to incorporate the peoples and the territories, oftentimes through the providing of voting rights. This approach does not account for the unique experiences and desires of each territory and neglects the nuances of each territory's history, current status, and preferred approach to decolonization. Looking to the future, the current text for the resolution, and this is both the resolution here but also the resolution in the U.S. House itself, needs to make clear to center concepts like self-determination and indigenous rights. The answer to the problem of U.S. colonialism in U.S. territories is not solved by merely granting voting rights or by setting the territories on a path to limited integration. Rather, it involves respecting the rights of the people of these territories to freely and fairly exercise self-determination and assisting them in moving towards their preferred future. And so, some of, some brief thoughts from myself, I want to echo what others have said, that this resolution can be a good start, but as former Congressman Underwood said, the U.S. Congress has the ability to give it teeth or give it meaning. In its current form, it regrets and it condemns past statements, but it doesn't impact the territorial system. It doesn't impact the fact that the United States basically still has the ability to treat the territories however it wants, and therefore the rights of the people in those territories are not their own but continue to belong to the United States. And even if you don't use terms like alien races or you don't use explicit racial language, the more fundamental issue, though, is do people that live on territories the U.S. claims have rights in and of themselves? And they should. They should have human rights. They should have rights as indigenous people. They should have the right to self-determination. And so if you really want to fix this problem, it goes beyond crossing out bad words or racist words, and it goes to that issue of the United States stepping back and saying the real problem here is not that we use bad racist language, the real problem is that we have long ignored the rights of the people in the territories to determine their future. And one, one final thing I want to point out, when all of these issues sort of come up, there's always this emphasis on improving our situation by moving closer to the United States. And I'm always reminded of the example of the late F.B. Leon Guero, or as Chamoros knew him as, Kiko Swilo, who went with B.J. Burdall you to petition for, for civil rights for Chamoros in 1936 and '37 to D.C. And he also pushed for the passage of the Organic Act, you know, and that Chamoros should become U.S. citizens. And he is often framed as somebody who passionately believed sort of that the Chamorro place, the place of Guam, sort of that we should always be moving closer to the United States. Towards the end of his life, though, around the time of the first Constitutional Convention, he made a lot of statements which showed that he had reflected on his life and that he had wished that him and other leaders had been more open to the possibilities of their situation. He, he used the phrase that "in our time, we, we, we did what we thought was best, but in those days even angels," there was, there was places where angels were afraid to tread, basically saying that at that time they didn't understand that they could do anything outside the United States, that the only option was to become U.S. citizens, that the only option was to get closer to the United States. But by the '60s, him and other leaders were beginning to realize that just because you were a U.S. citizen, it didn't mean that you were going to be treated with respect by the federal government. Just because you are U.S. territory didn't mean that the United States was going to treat you with respect. And so when we talk about things like this, we always have to be careful because Robert Underwood brought up earlier how the becoming, the ability to elect a governor came with the cost of how people on Guam could no longer have preferences for Guamanians in terms of government hiring. And that's what we have to be careful about, is that this issue for us is really one where we don't have a lot of options to get us out of this situation, but anything we do can make us sink further, make us sink further into the territorial quagmire. And so you have to be careful that you don't make too many statements in which you patriotically accept and enjoy that territorial quagmire, because it can always sink you further, and you can always lose those types of rights or those types of abilities to determine, what's it called, to determine, to determine their, to sort of have those basic forms of self-governance. And so, so yes, so on anything like this, I always want to be careful. We always need to center political status, self-determination, and the rights that exist outside the United States, because if we don't, then we may set ourselves up for just further amorphous integration, and we may never leave the territorial status. Because if all of our statements are that we love America and we're happy with whatever you do, and then if you complain that you don't like your status, they go back, they can show you the receipts and say, but we have 100 years of you saying how much you love us, so why don't you, why don't you like your status? So we always need to be firm that even if, that we always want something different, we always want something equitable, and so instead of focusing on incorporation and integration, we focus on self-determination and political status change. Sizou Smasi.
Buendubetsu, Mr. Bavakwa, Dr. Bavakwa. At this time, colleagues, before I open the panel to questions, we did receive a testimony from our Magahaga, the Honorable Lordess Elian Guerrero, who was scheduled to present. She has asked us if we could read her testimony into the record. I will yield right now to Senator, my colleague, Senator Mary Torres. If you could help me, please read the testimony into the record.
This is a letter from the Bofucina Ni Magahagang Guam, Lordess Elian Guerrero, Governor, dated May 5, 2021. Hafide Speaker, Vice Speaker Barnes, thank you for this opportunity to testify on Resolution Number 56-36 relative to expressing support of House Resolution 279, which acknowledges that the United States Supreme Court's decisions in the Insular Cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine are contrary to the text and history of the United States Constitution, rest on racial views and stereotypes from the era of Plessy versus Ferguson that have long been rejected, are inconsistent with our nation's most basic constitutional and democratic principles, and as such should be rejected. For more than 120 years, while the people of Guam and the people of our sister territories have played a vital role in American democracy, we have for too long met, been met with unequal treatment by the federal government. Upon acquiring the islands of Puerto Rico, Cuba, the Philippines, and Guam following the Spanish-American War and the Treaty of Paris in 1898, the United States was suddenly in possession of the island that was not intended for eventual statehood. Utilizing Article 4, Section 3 of the Constitution, the United States used its power to dispose of and make all needed rules and regulations respecting the territory of the United States to govern these new territories. This interpretation of Article 4, Section 3 was soon challenged and made its way to the United States Supreme Court. In a series of opinions known as the Insular Cases, the Supreme Court ruled that these lands were, quote, "foreign in a domestic sense," unquote, and were not a part of the United States for all constitutional purposes. Instead, the court determined that because these territories were not intended for future statehood and due to our, quote, "wholly dissimilar traditions and institutions," unquote, the Constitution in its entirety did not apply, thus establishing the territorial incorporation doctrine, which still applies today. Even more insidious was the decision that not all provisions of the Bill of Rights were applicable. Thus, while the court determined in Downs v. Bidwell that Congress could not create governments for the territories in such a way as to abridge fundamental rights, precisely which constitutional rights are fundamental has been left to a case-by-case determination. It would be gravely amiss for us to analyze the viability of the Insular Cases in modern history without acknowledging the fascist discourse that has inveigled the court's rhetoric and decisions. To further cite Downs v. Bidwell, Justice Brown justified the denial of constitutional protection because he found it, quote, "doubtful" if Congress would ever assent to the annexation of territory upon the condition that its inhabitants, however foreign they may be to our habits, traditions, and models of life, shall become at once citizens of the United States, unquote. In the same case, Justice White discussed the grave detriment to the United States should they bestow citizenship to those absolutely unfit to receive it. Because these territories were ruled by savages who were neither ready for the responsibility of self-rule nor incorporation into the Union, the United States established constitutional policy that those living beyond the borders of the United States were not afforded the same rights and freedoms as citizens despite being subject to its control. For over a century, the United States has used the territorial incorporation doctrine to relegate millions of U.S. to second-class status. To rectify this injustice, the United States Constitution in its entirety must immediately be applied equally to the territories as it does to the states. Unfortunately, although the United States decided the Insular Cases over a century ago, its territorial incorporation doctrine continues to affect the people of Guam today through many federal policies and programs. Due to our territorial status, Guam receives unequal treatment under federal programs such as Medicaid, the Affordable Care Act, and the Federal Highway Program. Furthermore, we are excluded from other programs, including Supplemental Security Income and the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. These policies have adversely affected our quality of life and ultimately our freedom and prosperity under the American flag. This is how the territorial incorporation doctrine materializes itself today. The right to self-determination is not something afforded to us when we are ready and deemed fit for self-governance. It is a right that is endowed by our Creator. The United States cannot hold a territory indefinitely, and our present political status does not meet our needs. As an unincorporated territory, we are limited in negotiating meaningful partnerships with our regional neighbors and lack the full authority to dictate how our land, skies, and waters are to be used. This acknowledgement is not and cannot be a substitute for self-determination, but it is a necessary step to right the injustices of the past. Lastly, I would like to recognize and thank President Biden for putting racial equality and justice at the center of his executive agenda and his commitment to take bold action through federal policies, programs, and agencies to address historical injustices. I look forward to working closely with his administration to uphold our democratic principles in the best interest of the people of Guam. Sinceramente, Lordess Elian Guerrero, Magahagang Guam, Governor of Guam.
Sizou Smasi, Senator Mary Torres for reading that into the record. Panel members, ndankalunasizou smasi, and thank you for your testimonies today, and I would like to open up the floor for any questions that my colleagues will have. And Senator Torres, I'll yield to you first since you are here in the public hearing room.
I just want to again thank everybody for the testimony. You know, this last letter that I read kind of hits to heart in a very sad way, I mean, to read into the record how you're, you're described as foreign in a domestic sense, wholly dissimilar traditions and institutions, the use of the word, you know, a grave detriment to the U.S. if they bestow citizenship on us who are absolutely unfit to receive it. It, it makes you wonder who they're talking about, you know, how, how human are you? Or is there such a thing as being not as human or not as civilized? And it's, it's quite a painful thing in this modern society to read such words and to have them still be applicable on the record and not reject it as they should be, as Resolution calls in the Insular Cases, for that they should be rejected. I think now, you know, we, we clearly aspire to be whole in every way, and I don't mean that from an activist point of view, but just from a human rights, civil rights perspective, to somehow read some, some such language that is so racist and so demeaning is, it really just, it strikes the heart, especially at a time where, you know, we are celebrating in this month, the law and the access to justice. And so I'm grateful, Madam Chair, that this resolution is in this time, in this month, that we are having the public hearing, because it really calls on us to think about who we are as a people, but who we are mostly as human beings in relation to other human beings, whether we are, we are, whether we are working on issues locally, regionally, nationally, internationally, where we stand as human beings and our fundamental civil rights, I think, is, is really at the root of this. So I pray that, that our children and future generations will never have such words written about them that are in, in the record, such as they are in the Insular Cases, because now is the time to rid it. It's just absolutely disgusting and quite hurtful. Sizou Smasi.
Sidos Massey.
Buen Pobetu, Senator Mary Torres. At this time, Speaker Terlahi, open to you first for questions or comments to this last panel. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank those who testified, Dr. Bavacca, former Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. Thank you for your patience and for your testimony for reminding us, you know, that history is important and our history is unique. And it has to be part of our discussion in, you know, when we talk about United States history, of course, and, and how we're going to move forward. That moving forward and, you know, denouncing racism is one thing, but moving forward with all of our, you know, with our eyes open and with all of our capacities intact that we know that there is so much more to do than to denounce racism. I mean, that's a, that's a start, as many of the other speakers said. But yeah, it's very important that nothing we do impacts our ability to seek self-determination, to recognize that, as, as former legislators before us have been consistent in that. And we recognize that. And so, I just want to give you my assurance that I agree with you and I am, I'm, I want to ensure that that is, that is our course. And so, I, I agree, we stay firm on that course and that in every way possible, you know, we, we bring this to attention of international community, national community, Guam community, and that we, we make our efforts consistent. So sidos massey, I think.
Thank you very much, Speaker Therese. Minority Leader Chris Duñez, I will allow you the floor this time.
Sidos Massey, Madam Chair. Certainly appreciative of the comments made by this panel. I would like to direct this question to Dr. Bavacca. On this basis, I'm, I'm sure in many other forums, we've heard each other's positions. And I've stated it twice on this panel today or within this discussion, this resolution today. I am an advocate for statehood, much like the chairman, my primo, Senator Eddie Duñez. So as I hear your comments, it's with intrigue that I, I hear you say, "Be careful", and that a closer relationship with the United States is not necessarily a path that would get us there. While I respectfully disagree, I ask this question as we move forward on self-determination. While I believe that independence and, and statehood are a parallel track in the calling for sovereign, sovereign status, my question to you is, while we move forward on, on this task with all the difficulties intact, do, do we ask ourselves a question as the people going forward, an entire community of Guam? Do we want independence or do we not want independence? Isn't that a fundamental question?
Yes, oh, definitely. I think, to your point about, and sidos massey, Senator, for your question. I think one thing that we should, that should combine all efforts to change Guam's political status is that Guam deserves more. That's, that should combine all efforts. Whether freely associated, state, or independent, Guam deserves more. And that the people of Guam, and in particular, the Chamorro people, deserve more to be, than to be just a footnote to the United States. We deserve to have a star on the flag. We deserve to have a flag at the United Nations. We deserve to either be a full part of America or to be, to sit next to America in the, in sort of the community of nations. And so, I think that part of, part of what I'm stressing is that we just need to always be consistent in the fact that, that, you know, that changing our status to any of the other options, the three options that have been mentioned, it should always be the goal. And that part of that sort of comes from sort of a willingness to stand up for ourselves and say that we deserve more than what we're getting right now. And that we, we don't just deserve it as people who have been patriotic or have sacrificed for America, but we deserve it because we're humans who have been denied rights for a long time. And it's part of sort of basic human dignity. And so, to your question about sort of independence, I think that's, that should be, that's why you have to have a sort of a plebiscite. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would disagree with the idea that everybody should vote in the plebiscite. I, I personally feel that, that it should only go to those who have been historically denied, sort of the, the right to self-determination. But I definitely agree that everybody should be involved in the discussion about it. And that, that's my, that's my personal preference on that. I feel that, you know, that there should be a mechanism through which Chamoros in particular can express what they want. And then, but it should be part of a larger debate in which everybody who loves Guam gets to, gets to express what they feel. And part of that is a real conversation within the community about, because we can't, well, one of the lessons that we can learn from the Commonwealth movement, because Commonwealth wanted to move closer to the United States, but also move away from the United States. And to your question, a big issue that we have to decide is, you know, is the track that we, we, we want to move forward to be fully into the United States? Or do we want to, like our, like our brothers and sisters around us, do we want to have a close relationship to the United States but also be independent and associated with the United States? And that's an important thing that we need to discuss. Which do we want? Because you can't have everything. What we see, for example, is that becoming a state will mean we lose some things. Becoming independent will mean we lose some things. But ultimately, we want to get our community moving in one direction or the other because we deserve more than to be just an asterisk of the United States.
So Madam Chair, my follow-up then, and I appreciate that because it's important that we be clear. And that's what I appreciate about your, your point of view. As you put it out, albeit, you know, particularly with status, albeit that we disagree. But I think it's always important to be clear because the public and those that are understanding what we do and the implications of what we do, it needs that clarity and that, that clarity and language on our, our positions. And I think that's more, more important, you know, when we're speaking, having been elected officials, that, that, that's an official position, representing the people, that we're clear about how we feel because it's very important. In, in closing, Madam Chair, I want to join Senator Torres in, in the, in the discussion on the celebration of law. And one of the observations I want to make and why I, I choose a statehood is because of the rule of law. And I believe the rule of law is so important. And regardless of, of, you know, in spite of the issues of historical injustices and, and racial issues, the rule of law is what makes us able to do what we're doing today and gives us our freedoms. And so, I wanted to celebrate that as well. Sidos Massey, Madam Chair.
Buen Pobetu, Minority Leader Senator Chris Duñez. And if I can see on the Zoom link, I see Senator Sabina. I, I will allow you the floor at this time.
Thank you so much, Vice Speaker. And thank you to all the panel members that have come in today to provide their testimony. I do take it to heart a lot of what you said. And, you know, I do agree that, you know, we have to come to a consensus, basically, what is what it is, right? When we're talking about moving forward. And I, I know that's going to take a lot of work. You know, it's a lot, you know, it's one thing to denounce racism, like what the speaker was saying. But, you know, really, the hard work of building and creating is something that's going to require definitely engagement, long-term engagement. And, you know, I think, you know, that's, you know, what I'm trying to do in so, in so many ways is to, you know, create a better society for our island. And, you know, while we're, we're working out the, you know, working out the roadmap for this, there's so much that we can do in the meantime, too, as well, to create a society that we want to, you know, be living in. And so, but this discussion is so important. And I'm so happy that, you know, we brought together, Vice Speaker, that you brought together so many experts in the field. And I hope to continue this conversation. So I think I'm committed to this, this work. Sidos Massey.
Buen Pobetu, Senator, Senator Perez. I also see on the Zoom link, I see, is Senator Joanne Brown? Senator Tony? If not, if there are no other further questions, once again to Senator, former Senator and Dr. Kelly Marsh Titino. Thank you for being here, Dr. Bavacca. Thank you for taking your time. I truly appreciate your time here for your insight, for your insights on what the Insular Cases mean to the people of Guam and our fellow Americans in the territory. As I listen to my colleagues and, and listening intently, I just want to say that the testimonies presented here today has truly hit me at heart. And as we were reflecting on real-life testimony as it relates to issues that have to go through the court system, again, having to fight for what is right, I think that this journey should continue to move forward. So un dunkluna sidos massey, todos hamzoo. If there's no one left to testify, the public hearing on Resolution Number 56-36 COR is introduced by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Clinton E. Rigel, Senator Jose Pedro Terlahi, Senator James C. Moylan, Senator Frank Blas Jr., relative to expressing the utmost support of the House Resolution 279, acknowledging that the United States Supreme Court's decisions in the Insular Cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine are contrary to the text and history of the United States Constitution, rest on racial views and stereotypes from the era of Plessy versus Ferguson that have long been rejected, are contrary to our nation's most basic constitutional and democratic principles, and should be rejected as having no place in the United States constitutional law, has been duly heard. This public recess will be adjourned. And the time right now is 12:15 in the afternoon. Before we finally close, individuals who wish to submit written testimony will have until May 15, 2021. They can do so by emailing it to senatormunyabarns@guamilegislature.org or you may send it or hand-deliver it to 163 Challenge Santo Papa, Hagatna, Guam, 96910. Sidos Massey, Tatluze, and Sidosenbini DC, Hamzotodos, Saina Massey.